Please rise for silent invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk call the roll?
Councilmember Ford.
Present.
Councilmember Tremont.
Here.
Councilmember Steltner.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bastian.
Here.
Mayor Burnett.
Here. We are here once again to talk about the budget recap of CIP and general fund and actually make some decisions. Jake, you want to hit the reset button for us and tell us what we're going to do?
Yes, sir. So, the last time we met in a workshop, we looked at the 317, which is the capital improvement program, which we had mentioned could be fully funded with the fund balance and still maintain above your recommended policy of 30 percent. Everything on the CIP qualifies, so we gave you those things. Your consensus was that nothing was going to come up at that time, so I'm looking for a vote to either keep everything or what needs to go. I do have a tally sheet like we did last year if there are questions on the items. We did approve the CIP and concept last month, so I don't think this will be a long process with the CIP. If you just glance through your list that Scott's going to show and make sure it's there. The one issue that has been discussed a little bit, but clarified was the gateway signage at I-95. Some council members didn't think it was necessary, some wanted to keep it, and that $4,000 is just to keep the licensing and process going with FDOT, so if we pick it up next year, it's ready to go. Having said that, we can probably advance it forward this year if council decides at a later date to do that. And then we'll go on to the à la carte menu.
Hey Jake, before you move on from the CIP, are we going to come back to that? I just have a question regarding that.
He's going to start the brief, but you can probably ask, Scott will probably have the answer to that question then.
The whole CIP or just the 317 fund?
Just CIP. I guess my question is, you know, with more pipes continuing to break, is there a need for funding that we're going to fund the CIP to be deferred toward more of those infrastructure type things?
No, sir. That's either a water or a drainage fund issue, and I'm not saying there's plenty of money in there, but there's R&amp;R money, replacement money for that kind of stuff. And Lynn's looking at replacing all PVC with ductile. That was on our half cent sales tax list, so that was there. We got a couple options. We can set a five or 10-year plan to replace it all. We can speed that up and increase our rate. We can bond it, or we can let it go and say a prayer. But either way, we're pretty confident we'll get that fixed. The one of concern on Spruce Creek, we're moving forward to get that across the road, and I think she's going to replace it with ductile as well. So it'll be across the road where it's not as big of a factor and replaced with some quality pipe. Of note, the recent hurricane screwed up a major PVC manufacturer, or the actual resin maker, and there's a rapidly becoming a shortage of PVC. So, and ductile is a little more expensive than PVC, which is why it went in and poured orange in the first place. So I see a lot more people spending a lot more money to replace their infrastructure as it breaks in the long run. But that'll be paid for out of an R&amp;R fund, in this case, water.
Looking forward to '21, I believe we were going to do a rate study in the spring.
Yes, sir.
So, among the components of that rate study absolutely should be what we're going to spend the money on and when. So, we'll be talking about that then.
So, on to the à la carte. As you recall from our discussion the other day, the à la carte was $64,500. Well, now it's $495,000, I see. But those items were discussed the other day in the workshop, and subsequent to that, we discussed them individually. And the other day when it was discussed, the $64,500, actually, we weren't in a budget discussion per se, but we talked about the $64,500 and didn't really spend much time hemming and hawing whether it was going to be approved or not, other than we had a brief conversation about the recreation manager and whether we wanted to fund that and for how long and why. And I think I explained that, but we can explain it again during the brief. Nothing else on that list was really brought to my attention as something that we didn't want to fund. We did talk about the ambulance cot, I forget the name a bit offhand, but the system spare for the ambulance. We talked about that a little bit. And we have not spent a lot of time coming up with any solutions for this, which is why I wanted to have the meeting today. I want to make sure that you're comfortable because I get the feeling that consensus was to fund most of, if not all of, the à la carte with the exception of the conversation with the rec manager. And I want to make sure going in, so there's no surprises on first reading on the ninth.
Okay. Dr. Neal?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. City manager, city attorney. I would like to thank the council for making the investment in Workday. That has substantially improved our ability to look at different numbers and to quickly get information out of the system. We still need a good budget module, and I'll be preparing a memo for the city manager for that, that ties right in. It is a component of Workday. It's called adaptive planning, and it does a lot of the things that we're manually doing now with spreadsheets going back and forth with the data. So I think going forward, that would make a much stronger and integrated budget system. What we have so far is an excellent Workday product. I think all of the departments are comfortable using that now. It's got internal controls already built in. One of the things that this year will be a little different on our audit is that the auditors have never seen that system, so they will be spending a little bit more time checking the internal controls to make sure that what we are doing is the way it should be. Unfortunately, within Workday, if you recall, that all of the individual processes are flow charted through the whole system. So it should be very easy for them to look at our internal controls. And I think it's probably stronger than it was, certainly with NavaLine. I know it was a major investment, but certainly the finance department thanks you for making that investment. The purpose is, again, to go over the budget and to prepare for a tentative millage vote, which will be on September 9th, and that is at 6:30, not 5:30 as previously stated. The second public hearing in budget adoption will be on the 23rd of September, again a Wednesday, at 6:30. In the meantime, Lupe and I are working very closely with the city managers department to finalize the numbers that we've had already with the guidance that you provided. We have taken the step right now to add all of the à la carte items and all of the 317 into Workday, as that was generally the consensus of the council, but we can always take those out and have those available for you by the 9th on the presentation. Again, just a quick review. Our total taxable value is 3.7 million. The value of a tenth of a mil for your quick calculation is $354,000. So as you're considering the impact of making certain changes in millage, that's a quick way to figure out what the impact would be. Currently, the max millage is a set at $4.6989, and that generated an additional $613,500. That, excuse me, that number is to not exceed. Certainly, we anticipate with the guidance of city manager and council that we will come in lower than that number. We're not quite sure where that will be, but shortly we will have that number for you with all of the changes that would be finalized tonight and incorporated in our discussions. Right now, we're at a balanced budget of $41,275. That includes the $613,500. The total bond, total debt right now for next year is $901,000, and the millage rate on that is .2519. Looking at the total millage, if it's a max millage rate, it would be 4.95. That's a change of .1529 mils or 3.19 percent. As indicated earlier, our year-end FY19 general fund unrestricted balance was $14,400,000, or about 37.9 percent. I'm still expecting at least $795,000 to be added at fund balance at the end of this year, providing $15,200,000 for an unrestricted balance. The minimum policy balance of 30 percent is about $11,700,000. So that should provide you the ability to use about 3.5 million and still be over the 30 percent policy guidance that you have set. Set.
How high above 30 percent will we still be? What's that number?
If what?
How will that number be above 30 percent? Where will we be?
Which number?
After we spend, whatever we decide to spend with our reserves.
If you spent the whole 3.5 million, you'd be at 30 percent. So, right now, you're looking at about $2 million on the 317 fund and an additional $155,000 on the à la carte. So you're well below the 3.5 million. So it'll be something over 30 percent, depending on what council decides. This is the chart that you have seen before. Again, the gear extractors and dryers are, and the third one down imperative, the fire. That has been put on the County CARES Act budget. And by the way, we're preparing that budget for your consideration for the 15th meeting. It's $760,000 total in that budget. We have a total allocation from the county of $2.2 million, so we have plenty of scope there to increase spending if we find legitimate needs. The only caveat right now is that those have to be in place and the money spent by the end of December. So, they may change that and move that out, but we're going forward with the expectation that we will have, everything that we have in that budget will meet the criteria and be eligible for reimbursement. So with that, as city manager had mentioned, I do have tally sheets. If you wanted to go down each one and make an individual vote or a motion for accepting the whole thing or whatever, Mayor, it's your pleasure, what you decide that's the best way to handle it.
We can start with, I think 317 is the first of the three pages, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mayor, can you give me just one second?
Yep.
Scott, and you don't have to answer off the cuff. Anytime in the next 10 seconds, I'll be fine. So, just for a quick discussion on our fund balance reserve policy, I think it's important to remember that while we set that percent of 30, that the idea is, is that when you have emergencies, disasters, unexpected, whatever we want to call what we have now, those are the times when you can go under 30. We've done that. So, I just want to, you know, for the public and for our residents, I think council is well aware of this, but it's not a hurricane fund. And I think we have to be careful about that because I had somebody the other day say, "Well, your hurricane fund." I said, "It's not a hurricane fund. It's for all kinds of, you know, unpredicted, unforecasted financial distress and disasters for the city and clearly the entire country is in that." So, that was just one note. What I would like to know, I'm getting to my question kind of a long way around, but what is the, so between the GFOA, which I think is 16.8?
Somewhere in there.
Somewhere in there. Between 16.8 and our 30 percent, what is that number? What is the value of the difference? Again, I'm not asking you for it right now, but at some point, if you can just touch on that and let us know that between where our policy falls and GFOA's recommendation falls, which is what most cities or a lot of cities seem to be staying at, where is that? Because I just kind of would like us to know from a comfort perspective that even though we might be going close to our 30 percent, we've still got whatever that number is.
Just a quick calculation. If the minimum policy balance is $11 million, half of that would be 15 percent. So that's a quick number. So you'd have another extra $5, $6 million or $4, $5 million.
Approximately, yeah.
Round numbers.
And Alan, both, just to put things in perspective, Matthew and Irma combined cost us $7, $7 or $8 million. So, even, you know, so we would have squeaked by it 17 percent.
So even if we had to do that scenario today, two back-to-back storms like Matthew and Irma, at 30 percent, we'd still have another $4.
Couldn't have afforded 2004, could afford 16 and 17, yes.
Got it.
And one of the things in your policy that you may recall is if you go under that 30 percent, the city manager needs to present a plan of how to get that back to 30 percent in two to three years. So there is a methodology for that. And one of the other recommendations a city manager has made is that you take some of that and maybe set up a hurricane fund, or specifically task that as a, maybe it's a for infrastructure things that council says, "Okay, I need some dollars." It's already set aside for that. That's a policy that many of the cities that I've worked with do. So they'll say, anything over X percent automatically goes into this fund, whatever you decide that fund to be.
You know, and that may be something for a workshop at another time for us to at least feel that out and have that discussion, because I think you're right. I think that's what some cities are doing. Because I've kind of been looking and asking and kind of had a little bit of interest. Where is everybody on their reserves, you know? And perhaps that's why I'm seeing some cities similar to ours are going so low is because maybe they have established a different type of fund specifically geared towards storms and hurricanes and--
Some of them dip into other enterprise funds and act as if their reserves.
And we're very interested.
Yeah. And I don't want to get too far down that tonight. That's not what we're here for, but just for sake of keeping that in the back of our minds. Thanks, Scott.
Scott, can I, I just want to make sure, back on slide 10, when you talked about the unrestricted balance of 3.5 mil, that does not include what you anticipate, what you said verbally, the 720 this year, correct?
Say that one more time.
The roughly 2.08 mil or whatever it is, it'd be coming out of that.
Coming out of the 3.5.
No, no, no. I'm not asking that question. I know that.
The rollover from this year's budget.
Yeah, the rollover. You think 795 is what will be not unspent this year that will go in there?
At least that, yes.
Okay. Have you added it into the 3.5 or is it on top of?
No, that's added in there.
Added in. Okay. That's what I want.
It's part of that 15 million, and then the balance of 30 percent is 11.7.
Right. So you've really got 2.8 mil right now.
Correct.
Okay. That's the number I was trying to get at.
That's correct.
Good question. With that, on the 317 fund, to make it simple, is anything in here you guys want to consider individually and then go ahead and give the okey-dokey on the rest of it?
Perfect. I'm good with the list.
Again, with a reminder, Mayor, that the $44,000, the third item, has been taken out of that. So it's $1,008,000 and change.
For the gear extractors?
Yeah.
The only thing I hadn't hold up over was the signage, but there's--
Well, I'll tell you what, why don't we take, why don't we take the gateway signage out and see if there's a consensus for the rest of it?
There's a consensus to keep it in. I was just making that, making the comment.
No, we'll consider it separately, and you can be on record. And I think that's fair, wouldn't you?
Good.
Okay. With that, may I have a motion to accept the 317 as presented with the exception of the gateway sign and the gear extractors?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. If there being none, anyone care to speak to the item? If there being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, may I have a motion?
Have a quick question?
Mm-hmm.
On the gear extractors, if we don't get it in the CARES Act, can we still fund it?
We will.
Okay. I just want--
Okay. It'll come back to you.
Okay.
But if I can't, if I can't find, well, it'll probably still come back to you because it's a $44,000 item, but we'll figure it out.
We'll have to approve it one way or the other. On the gateway signage, may I have a motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion, a second, discussion.
I have a question. The licensing fee, is that one time or is that annual until we go ahead and get something up?
That was asked before, and I believe Tim said that that was one time to keep it going, just to get the--
Tim said that.
I couldn't remember. You're right. You did ask.
The other question that you asked was, if we wait, does the price go up? And the answer was, very possibly. So we want to take care of it now.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I guess there is one more. If we pay for it, is that good for five years? 10 years? Is there a time limit on how long? Once we've purchased that license, does it expire or sunset?
I believe that was asked before as well, and the answer was, no, it doesn't expire.
Okay.
As long as we keep the project on our CIP and keep it moving forward, it won't gather any more momentum until you guys snap the chalk line and say, "Put the thing up."
Okay.
The only thing I could see is if the elected officials change or your thought, or you go to another city and you see another beautiful sign and go, "Hey," ask Zep Cohen or somebody to look at this one and redesign it, we'll have to pay Zep Cohen or somebody more money to show us some more options. But if you're going to go with one of the options already provided, it's in a can, ready to go. This $4,000 will put us that much closer.
Okay.
Don't suggest to us that we need another workshop.
No, we're good.
No, but in fairness, in fairness for Maryland, I think it would be good for staff to bring her up to speed.
I was here when the presentations were made. I was not elected, but I was here.
Oh, okay. Got you. Got you.
And I'm writing myself in hope because I had some pretty strong thoughts about it, and I haven't discussed them with the manager yet.
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure that you had, I didn't realize that you worked better.
Actually, I saw it differently than all you guys. I liked a different version than the one that was presented. So--
Does seem like a lot longer ago. Beauty is in the eye of the beholder.
Some of these projects take so long, it's hard to remember who was--
Anything pre-COVID seems like it was a different century.
So, believe me, I would have put the design back up and shown you what you voted on before, and we will.
Yeah.
And if you guys don't like it--
I don't want to redesign.
We're good with that, you know?
Let's cross that bridge when we get to it.
Finish the project.
So, I-95 gateway signage, any other comments or questions? Anyone in the audience care to speak to the item? Back to us, final comments or questions? Call the roll.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Tremont?
No.
Councilmember Steltner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bastian?
Yes.
Mayor Burnett?
Yes. 4-1. That brings us to page two, the à la carte requests.
Well, do we not have to put a vote for the fire extractor gear now?
The gear extractors? So, let me clarify that Dr. Neal has brought up something that the CARES Act is a reimbursement. So, you'll see budget resolutions come forward for these items to pay for them. The gear extractors will be paid for. We're asking for CARES Act money for them. If CARES Act says no, then they're paid for. And that's the discussion we'll have on the 15th. We're going to, we're going to fund basically $700,000 worth of stuff, and I, Scott, and soon to be the county will be reasonably confident, or the county will tell us, "No." And we've gone back and forth with them before that that stuff will be approved. We are, as we are with FEMA, at the whim of the Secretary of Treasuries Audit System to get that money. So, if we're dabbling in a gray area or in a red area and the county doesn't catch it, we're not going to get that money back. But there's not too much we think is even in the gray area. And this gear extractor may be something that dabbles a little bit in the gray area. We don't think it does, but again, reimbursement's in the eyes of the beholder.
And just because of the pool where we're talking about getting these funds from, what is the, what does the current balance do that we believe we're going to get back from previous storms that we still have kind of tagged out there? I know it's not a whole lot. We're getting close to--
I think we have--
3.6 million, I believe.
Yeah, 3.6, something like that.
Still out there.
Still a lot.
Still out there to possibly recoup.
Do we think we'll have that by October 15?
Figure out which year.
Of which year?
Yes. I think Alan's going to pick up the check tomorrow.
Tomorrow? About 3.6, you said?
They're in Orlando, sandwiched between the absentee ballots.
Is that on top of the 15 million?
Yeah, that's a lot.
Yes. We don't look the revenue until we know how you get it.
It's only a potential accounts receivable until it's approved.
I'm not counting it per se, but we know, you know--
It's a potential accounts receivable. It's not an actual accounts receivable.
We spend it on the storms. We're getting reimbursed. It really has already been spent.
Because we've been getting back in the high 90 percent of what we put in for, right?
Yeah, that's awesome.
I remember Alan talking about that one time. I want to say we were pretty high in the 90 percentile of what we were expecting to get back. We are getting back.
I'd indicated, I think, a couple sessions ago, that, and Allison, when she's talking with the FEMA folks, they're getting on with the CARES Act or with the coronavirus things, and they'd like to get all these off their books. So she's anticipating that they might be a little sooner than it would have normally been.
We'd like for them to get it off their books, too.
We can hope.
Yeah, we'll help them get it off their books.
All right, à la carte requests. Is there anything on here that we need to consider individually? And I think it would be appropriate to consider the rec manager individually. Anything else on there that you want to consider individually?
Just a reminder, the ones with the X's are the ones that are the possible fund balance items. The others are millage, non-X's.
If there's nothing else you'd like to consider individually, I'd accept a motion for approval of everything else.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion, a second. Any questions or comments? If there being none, anyone here care to speak to the item? No?
Mayor, just a clarification. When you say everything else, is that including all of the other millage items and the fund balance items?
Scott made the motion, so he's got to answer that question.
Yes.
Okay. And I can't speak for him, obviously. As much as I'd like to at times, just saying. With that, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
We have--
Opposed.
We have 4-1.
Got it.
And just, just for clarification purposes, because I've made a commitment not to vote anything above a rollback, I don't think it'd be fair to me to offer a yes to these now and then a no later.
Fair enough. With that, the position in Parks and Rec, the rec manager, let's get that on the floor for discussion with a motion. May I have a motion for approval of the rec manager as proposed in the à la carte request?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we have discussed this ad nauseam. This is nine months for the budget. Of course, this is, here's some flexibility there based on when Susan's actually able to get the person on board. Are there questions or comments on this item?
Just a comment, I don't see how we don't prove and invest in this with what we have already committed to that we know is coming.
To the rec center.
I mean, this is a kind of, in my mind, this is kind of a right thing to do. This is community investment in a big project that's already up and running and getting off the ground quickly, so.
Jake, you had something to add?
Yeah. Keep in mind currently, Susan, if you recall our conversation, she has no rec managers right now. She's asking for one later, and the reason she can kind of play the shell game right now is because of COVID, there's not a lot of rec going on. But, but we're going to need to start filling that up, God willing, and the vaccine starts to rise, that we're back in business toward the end of this year, beginning of next year. And the last thing you want is a rec manager that checks aboard the day we, the day we cut the ribbon to the community center, and that person's dealing with community center and-- center and a full rec schedule.
Sounds like how cities select their city managers.
That may happen, right?
Been there.
What, what you got there?
Yeah, Mayor, I would say, I questioned this when it first came up. But after the workshop last week and the explanation, they need the staff to run that larger building. There's no way around it. And at the end of the day, it's providing tremendous service to all our residents. And the nice part about Parks and Rec, they are revenue producing. They, they may not get all the revenue to take care of the position, but there's going to be some offsets, which is not the case in some of the other things that we need to do. So after listening to everything and, and looking really at the big picture and other things along the road for Parks and Rec in the future, I'm convinced we need to do this.
Yeah, I agree. Scott, bring up a good point, obviously. You know, we've committed to do it, so we need to, we need to staff it. And that meeting the other night was very, very eye-opening. I didn't realize just how far we were in our ability to fund the act, the full project.
That's why we discuss these things.
And it's good to point out that, you know, we talk about impact fees, all sorts of impact fees that we have and the idea that, you know, the amount of development, people get so irritated about the amount of development that we, that we have. Well, you know, it's development that would gives us a new, a brand new, you know, virtual, a brand, virtually a brand new rec center because of those impact fees.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Would anyone here care to speak to the item? No? Okay, back to us, final comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Draymond?
Yes.
Councilmember Stolner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bastian?
Yes.
Mayor Burnett?
Yes, five oh. And that brings us to page three, the non-general fund a la carte requests. Anything here that you want to talk about separately? These are mostly enterprise funds, drainage, personnel.
I would like to just ask a question. What is the cross-connection program coordinator? Is that like a particular thing? Or does this person?
Let me tell you about that.
Do.
I happen to have my cross.
Shared duties?
Cross-connection coordinator, subject matter expert here tonight.
Different from the parallel coordinator, right?
Knowing this question would come up.
Good evening. Lynn Stevens, Public Works and Utilities Director. Cross-connection control is our backflow prevention program. It's a program required by DEP for drinking water systems. And ours has been expanding with all the new homes going in, the reclaimed water, the secondary water systems using stormwater for irrigation in some communities that are being built out west. So our program is growing by leaps and bounds. And it is becoming quite a Herculean task to follow up on that program. We're also planning in the very near future to stop contracting the backflow testing out and bring that in-house. And this is our first step towards that effort.
So is the cross-connection, is that a thing?
Oh, yes. Yes, ma'am. Cross-connection control is a program required by the state of Florida, drinking water program. It's the backflow devices that go on your potable water meters that prevent something the customer does on their side of the meter from backflowing into the public water system, whether it be a private well. We have quite a few folks out there that have private irrigation wells. As we find them, we're putting backflow preventers on the drinking water system to protect us. Where also, all reclaimed customers have to have a backflow prevention device. These devices have to be tested by a certified testing protocol. We have to have all the records. We have to provide that report to DEP annually. So it, it is a full program. And this coordinator, we're looking for someone that is backflow certified for both testing and repair so that they can take care of city-owned facilities and those backflow preventers. They'll also be able to oversee the contractor that's doing the backflow testing and go back and spot test devices to make sure that they're tested properly and we are getting what we pay for. Not that we don't think we are from our contractor, please don't misunderstand, but we just want to have that extra level of assurance to make sure our contractors are doing what our contractors are supposed to do. And then again, in about two years, we'd like to come back and, and ask for one additional person to start doing our own backflow testing instead of contracting it out.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions about anything on this list?
Yes, yes. Hang on one second. The, the street sweepers?
Yes, sir.
What are we doing with that? We've talked about that off and on throughout and I hear comments from the public, we had street sweepers, we didn't have it. Remind me where we're at, I just.
So currently, we contract out street sweeping to USA Services. We just renewed that contract a few months ago. We gave you a full presentation. We looked at the cost of doing it in-house. We looked at the cost of continuing to, to contract that service out. We would like to bring it in-house.
I remember.
And that's what this program is, is to purchase two street sweepers with two equipment operators. It is under the stormwater system, so it's under the enterprise fund. It used to be under solid waste. When the program first started out, it was to keep the city pretty. So now it's a requirement under our stormwater permit with the state. We're required to have street sweeping to keep the storm drains clean. So that's why it got moved. Dr. Neal's and I spoke about it last year along with Mr. Johansson. We moved that program under drainage, which is where it should live. So then we started looking at, how can we do a better job? And we believe we can do a much better job in-house with two people, with two sweepers. We can keep the same level of service which council has indicated they want to maintain. And we could also add additional services. So.
I remember now. It's been a long spring break.
That's okay.
A long year of COVID.
And they are diesel trucks.
And they're, are there any other? Different level of excitement. I just want to get the picture of Jake atop one of those once the first one rolls in.
Okay. We'll get him in there.
Not going to happen.
And I think I remember you saying before, this won't change our non-ad velorem fee that's on the taxes, the stormwater.
That's correct. It's already being paid out of the stormwater fund.
Okay.
So it's, it's already in there.
Okay.
And, and there is no additional cost as far as the, the fund goes.
Okay.
The only cost is to purchase the two sweepers and to get the two folks on board.
Okay. When does the contract with the current company end?
I believe it's March. We did a one-year contract.
Twenty twenty-one.
We have the option to renew, so we do have options there if we wish. But we, we wanted to have plenty of time to get the equipment because these are not stock vehicles.
Okay.
You can't just go buy one off the shelf.
Go down to the street sweeper market and pick them up?
Yeah.
Maybe we can get some of those trucks.
Not so much.
They use at the Speedway. Those are some serious street sweepers.
And just blow everything into another city.
Yeah, those are just the blowers. They don't, they don't quite do it.
Oh, no.
They have the sweepers, too?
They have the truck, once they blow everything down low, because those trucks can't go up on the.
Sure.
They go down low and then they clean it all up. They, so.
And we are going to go with the vacuum style, which does a nicer job with the cleaning.
Okay.
Questions, comments? I would like to have a, a motion on the floor to accept all the a la carte requests under non-general fund.
Second.
Okay. We have a proper motion, a proper second. Other questions? Would anyone here care to speak to the item? No? Final comments, questions, council? Call the roll.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Draymond?
Yes.
Councilmember Stolner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bastian?
Yes.
Mayor Burnett?
Yes, five oh. Jake, what other guidance do you need from us?
I am clear now. We will crunch some numbers. Lupe's spending the night here, I think, work in workday. So we'll have some numbers.
She's smiling, so that's a yes.